Thank you. I call this meeting of the Durham Board of Selectmen to order on September 27, 2022. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Any amendments to the agenda? Nope, and there's nobody, nobody here but us board members and town manager and assessor's agent, so nobody's here for public comment. So we're gonna go right into an assessor's session tonight. Donna Hayes is with us to help talk us through the abatements and supplements that we've been struggling with for a couple of meetings, so.
Okay.
We do have, so, sorry, we have a formal process we have to go through.
Oh, sorry.
So I move that we enter assessor's session. Joe?
Second.
Seconds, all in favor? Okay, we are now tax assessors.
Okay. So you have abatements and supplementals in front of you. The background of this is I had a plan that was presented to me by a code officer who asked me to put on map and lot numbers. I put on map and lot numbers, assessed new lots, and then sent out tax bills, and this is not an approved subdivision. Yes.
I was gonna say.
And so I have the top part of this, but the bottom part where normally I would look for a signature wasn't there, and I never looked for it. So I did it. So Mr. Pass came in and said, no, this.
Why do I have all these tax bills?
This was never approved, and I thought, oh. So I had to abate everything. So that's where all the abatements come from. But the truth is, there were two lots in there that were actually sold, one to Fortin and one to Matthew, which I assume is his son. The other bad thing is there was a house in there unfinished that I assessed to Matthew when in fact it was Fortin. So I have two supplements, that's why nothing is gonna match.
There was a house in an unapproved subdivision?
Yes, because the.
Sold to lots.
Say that again?
I'm sorry, yeah.
Sold to a single lot.
It's right. It's a single lot.
Oh, right, of course.
And then the other one went to the son. So.
I said front.
Yeah, so, and then we have a road in there which is Holiday Drive. So when you have a road in there and I have an assigned road, I just made the assumption, and that's my bad. So then, when you mean the supplements, they're not gonna match, nothing's gonna match, because Matthew had the house that he no longer has that goes to Fortin, which has since been sold, and so I guess the easiest thing to say is.
We'll trust you on this one.
Yes.
I'm so glad you said that.
I mean, it's just too much.
It was a good.
Just shake it up, and this is how it landed.
Good try to get some extra money in.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Curtis wants to come in and talk about it.
So that's, yes, and so I painted things with signatures that are needed on all of those.
Let's do, let's send them this way, we'll do it one at a time, I'll read it, we'll vote on it, and then we'll just sign it and send it along.
Okay.
Okay, so. Curtis. I'm gonna move, whoops, I'm on, so I'm just gonna, I don't know, this order might be different than what you've got, but, so I'm gonna move that we issue an abatement in the amount of $1,078.47 to Fortin Construction for map lot, map four lot 32K for reasons previously described by the assessor's agent.
How much was it for? So, why does it come to a total of 1,079.65 on this?
Yeah, that's kind of my.
It's like a dollar.
It's the, it's the interest, is it with interest, is that the actual?
No, no, you have to take the top amount before. So when those are printed, those are printed after they haven't been done, so there is no interest, it's, it's the principal amount always.
It's just the principal I overhear on this call.
Yeah, 'cause we'll backdate it and take it off as of the date.
I get it. The system is calculating interest because of the date that you ran.
And I can't help it because they haven't been paid.
That's why.
Okay, got it, got it.
So they're all backdated, written to the original amount.
Okay.
Okay.
So was there a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, Rich seconds there. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, five oh, sign these.
Sorry, I jumped into discussion.
Well, I was gonna ask, that's why I suppose I'm on again.
But then, I'm like, I thought you said we weren't going down the rabbit holes. All right, so now we have, this is a supplemental tax warrant in the amount of $3,990.96 for, I don't see.
In the.
For Fortin Construction, I don't see a map and a lot on this.
On the bottom, maybe?
I see an account.
Okay.
Was that the same, was that reference of map and lot?
It's referenceable.
Okay, for account 2202.
Dash three.
Well, this one just says 2202.
Oh, it's up at the top.
Yes.
Oh, up at the top it does say dash three, down at the bottom it just says.
Makes a difference.
Okay, so for 2203, and we have a second, so the motion is supplemental tax warrant for Fortin Construction for $3,990.96 for account 2022-3, and we have a second.
Is that, that's not the account number. The account number is 2202 on the bottom.
Oh, you're right, wow, too many twos and zeros. For, thank you for that correction, so for account 2202.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Now we have an abatement. Oh, are we doing five lots together on this one?
Yes.
So this is for the unsold lots in there?
Yes.
Okay. So an abatement for the unsold lots as referenced in the attachment for accounts 2199, 2200, 2202, 2203, and 2204. This is the one that had four lot numbers.
Whoops, he was just, no, he was just reading this down here, okay.
All right, so let me read this, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that we grant abatements as follows. For map four lot 32001, $1,136.43, account number 2199. For map four lot 3202, $1,086.75, account number 2200. Map four lot 32004, $1,078.47, account number 2202. Map four lot 032005, $1,078.47, account number 2203. And map four lot 032, number six, in the amount of $1,190.25, account number 2204. Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Joe, any discussion or questions, Rich?
Yeah, just the differential between this abatement and the previous one that we did for account 2202, it's the same amount.
Yeah. Who's got the paperwork we just signed on?
I'm just going off the form here, this matching notice.
Yeah, it did reference account 2202.
Okay, so the one we just did was Fortin, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
All right, hold on. These are tax bills.
And this is an abatement for, yes. Is that an abatement or a supplemental though on that?
That's a supplemental.
Yeah, because it's the lot that has the house on it.
That's, that's.
So account 2202 is Fortin, and that one is, yes, so we had to abate, we had to, so originally the abatement of that lot was, because it was assessed under Curtis Pass.
Okay, so we're taking Curtis Pass off.
So now we're supplementing it to Fortin with the house.
And it would still reference the same account number?
Yes, yes.
The map and lot, but the account numbers, the map and lot number obviously stayed the same, but the account numbers also do.
I tried very hard because these are abatement, there's a bunch of abatements and supplementals that have to be processed, I tried to keep it, so instead of keep, usually I do a map and lot number, which I do.
Yeah.
But I want the key to go back to that account number when it's processed.
Okay, can, if, for future ones, can we include the map and lot, those, 'cause?
Yes, well, and those map and lots that I'm abating, they're going away too, so that was kind of, because they're no longer lots.
Right.
Yeah, so, okay, yes.
The account number's really the only reference, I got you.
Yes, I want that to be the reference so that we don't.
Got it.
But that's my, that's just my thinking on the processing and not thinking about you guys, which I'll do.
No, I understand it now, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
In Holiday Drive.
Thank you.
And Holiday Drive, yes. Well, I have one house, no, the.
I shouldn't.
The house is on Holiday Drive.
That's a planning board discussion topic.
Yes, the house is on Holiday Drive.
There's a house, there's a street, gotta call something.
Yeah, there just can't be three, I mean, there just can't be a couple of those, because you can't call her.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
All in favor. Thank you, Donna, I did, I did get that.
You did get it.
I did get that. Like I was saying earlier.
Yes. This one is, this is a supplemental tax warrant to Matthew Pass.
Yes.
In the amount of $1,080.54 for account 2201.
Yes.
Okay, and so I move that we, yeah, we'll do, we'll do this one and then we'll do this one. So that, consider that a motion that we approve that supplemental tax warrant as previously mentioned.
Yeah, second.
Five seconds, any discussion on this one? All in favor? Okay. One more.
Yay.
This is a certificate of abatement.
Yes.
To be issued to Matthew Pass in the amount of $3,993.03, again for account 2201, map four lot 32-3. So this is the counter of this, on the same lot, account. Is there a second on that motion?
Joe?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All right. I think we finally did this.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in, because we would've never been able to get through that without you.
Well, I know, I know, and.
This had to have been a.
It was just, it was brutal to do the paperwork, believe me.
Yeah, I bet.
But it was, it was humbling, you know?
Okay, that's just copies of what we just did, okay. All right, I'm gonna move us out of assessor's session. Rich seconds? Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Municipal valuation return.
Oh, oh, we are gonna talk about that, okay, yeah, sorry.
Well, let's sign it, I need your signatures.
Oh, okay, sorry, yeah.
Okay, so, go?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Okay, so what I have for your signatures are the municipal valuation return, you have copies of it, it's a ten-page report that I have to do annually for main revenue service. It's reporting of our valuations, our exemptions, our percentage of market value. We get reimbursed for our exemptions from the state of Maine, and we report, like our homesteads, I report that the first part of June, but it's kinda iffy, they wait until our valuation return comes in, and these are the actual numbers that were used, and this will be used for our, our last percentage of reimbursements. We are at 80% of market value, I would like to just say in the very near future, February, March, let's get together and talk value and a strategy plan of what to do over the next few years.
Okay.
Any questions? No. It's just statistics. Can I have it passed around so that you can sign it and I'll, I'll send it into the state? Thank you.
I'm gonna move that we approve the municipal valuation return as presented by the assessor's agent.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Let me take this one, I'll put it in the open here.
Okay.
Good, I thank you. Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you for coming in, Donna.
Of course, of course.
Thank you.
See you, I'll see you Monday.
Okay, now I will move us out of assessor's session. Rich, still seconds. All in favor?
All in favor.
Okay, back to our regularly scheduled program. Do we have fire chief or commissioner reports tonight?
Uh, no reports, and what I've, what I'd like to do with those reports where they do an actual monthly report, I'd like to move that they turn those reports in on the second meeting of the month and have them attend that meeting if you have questions, that way they can kinda discuss what they did that month and give, and give you what's on the radar for the following month, if that would be all right, rather than having them come to both meetings. Is, do you still want them to come to both meetings, or?
I, I think it's, I think it was important in the past prior to a town manager, but I don't think it's necessary again.
Right.
Exactly what I said, doing what we met this week.
Okay, that's, I feel the same way.
And, and, for our discussion, 'cause, you know, Jerry and I have been getting together, you know, roughly once a week just to, you know, help the transition and whatever, and the way we talked about it, it doesn't mean that, you know, if something's going on that they wouldn't be here.
Right.
You know, or whatever it is, you know.
Right.
But in turn, if it's just kinda normal course of business, they, they really don't need to be here every time we meet, I don't think.
Right, and if, and if there's something that's, I can report on, I certainly will. But everything's good.
Do you have anything to say about the Grange Hall?
The lot?
The posts at the Grange Hall.
The Eureka Center?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Eureka Center.
Yeah.
You don't know it's the Grange Hall.
Yeah, the post underneath?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Calvin went in and did an inspection, and some of the posts that hold up the beam down below was laying on the floor.
All the columns?
Yeah, the columns, the lally columns, basically, and some of the brick lally columns, if that's what you wanna call them, are eroding underneath too. So he's gone down and he has shored that up, 'cause we still have people using that. So we're going to, we're gonna get somebody in there, probably someone, maybe, maybe an engineer to just to say, look, what do we need to shore this up? Tell us what that is, and then get some estimates on what it's gonna cost to, to do that. I, I don't think it's gonna be a lot of money, you know, maybe six by six pressure-treated posts enough, maybe more lally columns, but I think to get a good, to get a structural engineer in there just so we know we're, we're safe and it's stamped, and I think that's the way to go, and then we can get an estimate on.
That's why it felt a little bouncy.
Yeah, 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 he took pictures of it, and it's not good. And I think, and according to Calvin, it looked like there was some work in the progress, 'cause those, there was those little round cement pads, footings, they were down there, but they, it just never got done.
Well, even that, that's, no engineer's gonna consider that a proper footing.
Right.
I mean, it's good for a temporary thing, you know, but.
Yeah.
Unless that thing's sitting on ledge, it's not gonna be considered a proper footing, I don't think.
Right, well, it's been that way for years.
And sand.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll get on that and, and talk about that.
Okay, great.
Get that shored up.
So, anything else, like, in the fire chief or commissioner world?
No, they're, they're, no, they're, nothing to report, they're working on their CIPs, and we'll talk about that when, when the time comes, but, yeah.
All right, then we'll roll into your report then.
Okay, so the ARPA-funded project, so this building here is basically done as far as heating and cooling goes, seems to be working well. Insulation was supposed to be done today, they called Calvin and said they were gonna be here today, they never showed up, so, but I guess it's on the schedule, they'll get here when they, but yeah, I'm assuming it'll be this week.
Surprise.
Right, and agility is up at the fire station right now doing the work up there, and they should be done by the end of the month. I haven't gotten a report from them, but I know they went up and started working on this. Yeah, so he's up there.
This feels better.
Yeah, this is a lot, yeah, this is a lot better in here now. Actually, sometimes it's a little dry, actually, but it's good. It was better than it was, 'cause my office, when it was down, I bet it was 90 in there a couple of times when we had those hot days, but no, that, that's all good, so that's, that's done. We're working on the phones and I'll have Devin speak about where he is with IT, but the phones, they were supposed to be installed on the 21st and 22nd, but Comcast is having trouble getting the numbers ported over from Consolidated, so, you know, they own the numbers now, so they had to, they had to put that off.
How many years has it been?
I don't, I don't know, and it's kinda weird, 'cause when I ported, when I had my number with the municipality that I worked before within the same company, to try to port it over to my personal, it, that was a pain, so I can't imagine working with two different companies, so, right now it's scheduled for October 6th to have them come in and do it, which is unfortunate in a way, 'cause I believe it's a Thursday. I'm trying to get them in here before 10:30 when we open, 'cause it's gonna shut down the lines and the internet, but I tried to get them on a Wednesday, but then that was pushing it to August, October 19th, and we just kinda wanna get that done. So that's, so that's kinda been a scheduling snafu, but we're in constant communication with them, so that's when, that's getting done, is October 6th.
How long of a time do they take to switch that over when they do come in?
Not long, the internet's only down for like 10 or 15 minutes, but they gotta connect the wires, so they'll be in here for a few hours. Phones will only be down for about a half hour.
Okay.
So it ain't that big of a snafu, but I would prefer it to be done when we're not open for business, but that's, that was almost impossible to, 'cause they can only, can, they can only schedule when they got people in the area, so they say. So that's, we're working good there. Like I said, I had Devin working on some IT stuff, we've been talking, and we're, we're working on getting some computer pricing, right? Devin, come on and have a seat. So we've been talking, and we kinda counted the number of computers we have in here, which is like 23.
23?
But we're not gonna replace all 23 in one year, that, that, that's foolish.
How do we get 23?
How do we get 23 computers?
Well.
Well, that's the whole town.
Right.
The fire station.
Everybody.
Oh, okay, well, you said in here, I thought you meant in the office.
Well, whatever, Durham, well, no, right, in here it's not, not quite that, but.
Multiplying.
We're, right, we're not gonna, we're not gonna replace them all at once, 'cause they're not.
Right, right.
So what, we picked the eight, I believe, we're gonna do, we kinda divided it in thirds. So if we do, if we do eight now, we can do eight next year, and then we can do eight the 24th, and then we wouldn't have to be buying any computers for a while, and then when we do, we.
We'll be staggered.
We'll, we'll be staggered, and I think that's just a more economical way to do it, so I've had Devin do some research on exactly, what are we getting from computers? 'Cause right now it's BKE, B.
Data defined BEK.
Yeah, defined, so they're kinda like taking care of it all, computers and everything, but I had him looking to Dell, because they're getting their computers from Dell, so they're kind of a middleman, and I kinda like to get them through Dell, because I think we could save a little bit of money, so he'll tell you basically what, what he's, this is the first time I'm hearing this, by the way, so, on what we're getting, what the costs are, so.
So I had Dell spec the exact same computers that we'd be getting from Data Defined, and we're actually getting slightly better machines through Dell, 'cause of the way they had a, they had a deal at the time I asked them, so we will save if we go with buying through Dell. Data Defined is still gonna have to come and install them, that is absolute need, there's no way I can do it without them. So with their install fees, with our purchased hardware, that total comes to about a little under 20 grand, and that's saving $1,307 over what the same thing, slightly worse computers, would be through Data Defined. With the computers through Dell, we're also getting four years of next-day technical support, including accidental damage, so even if we are klutzy and we just completely drop a computer, they'll come next day, have that replacement for us.
Is this through a special, like, Dell business unit, or?
It's through the government program.
Okay, okay.
So.
Did we explore leasing at all? 'Cause we, we talked about that in one of the meetings, like, that maybe we should look into leasing.
Jerry and I talked about it, I can have him talk with what his thoughts were about that.
Well, we talked briefly about it.
Yeah.
And I haven't looked into leasing, I, I just think it's probably just better to, to own the.
Well, the, the.
The machines.
Well, I would tell you, the more standard model is, is to lease in larger companies, and maybe, maybe not for smaller municipal offices, maybe it doesn't make as much sense, but, okay.
All right, the last municipality that I worked for, we, we don't have to do everything the other municipalities, but it was, that we bought them outright.
Okay.
Rather than leasing them. I mean, we're leasing a, we're leasing a, a copier in there, we're paying through the nose what we could buy it for, and I'll explain that at another meeting, 'cause it's coming up.
Okay, okay.
So, I think if you're buying, if, if you have a bigger organization and you're, you have a lot of computers, that might be a better way to go. This is a pretty small outfit, really, so, we can look into it to compare pricing, but.
Are these laptops or desktops?
There are seven desktops, one laptop that is getting replaced.
And that's cool with whoever's workstation this is going to become, that's.
The first eight that we're starting with are the, what we have decided to be the highest priority, as in they're the ones that are used the most here, at the fire station and at Public Works, so nobody's getting like cut or like left behind through this, we're all getting the priority ones taken care of first.
Is the town clerk getting a laptop?
She, she will have one.
But she's not, I was the only one getting a laptop.
Yeah, but the, your old one's gonna hire.
Right.
'Cause she only uses it for elections, so we don't need to get her a brand-new one if we have the old one, which is.
So you'll give her two assets, basically, a laptop and a regular desktop, that's a good idea.
So we're, we're able to recycle as well as, you know, prioritize the computers that are most likely to break and cause a huge problem, so. Besides that, I got a email from Data Defined today, our firewalls are finally in, they're configuring them now, and they're gonna let me know when they're ready to come over and install them, 'cause that will cause a temporary half an hour at the most loss of internet, so we'll probably get that on a Wednesday, is, you know, probably early in the day or late in the, whatever we can figure out. But that's coming up, which is good. You already talked about phones, happy to get that taken care of. I guess I can briefly say about future projects with Eureka Center, I'm in the exploratory phase now of trying to figure out what exactly we want over there, how much roughly it will cost us next spring, and when we start talking about that more heavily. I'm talking with Panasonic for the cameras and microphones, I'm talking with Ubiquity to get the networking set up over there, and I also spoke very briefly with Comcast, if we want to, instead of having some type of conduit from here to there, instead we just set up service over there, I'm looking in to see what our options are for that. I don't really have a lot, it's very much just I'm contacting all the reputable brands and. And I also spoke very briefly with Comcast, if we want to, instead of having some type of conduit from here to there, instead we just set up service over there. Um, I'm looking in to see what our options are for that. Um, I don't really have a lot. It's very much just I'm contacting all the reputable brands I know, learning.
Trying to get that number lined up.
Yep.
If I may ask, the, the company that is doing all the work, is there any downside by us going um, and purchasing our own versus going through them, sometimes, you know, like, Todd, come fix my roof, yeah, but if I don't provide the shingles, if you get them, it's twenty percent extra or something like that, is, is there added costs when they're not supplying?
They have not told me there was, they said that it was fine. Um, I mean, I, the professional services might slightly adjust.
Well, that's, that's typically what happens, is why I was getting that, so sometimes, I think right now, you're saying, what, a hundred bucks a computer or something, or maybe a hundred and twenty-five bucks a computer.
Right.
That might end up costing you more, now granted, you might be getting more for going that route, I just wanted to make sure that.
Well.
That we're pretty transparent with them.
Thinking about the work that they'd be doing with them, um, they would not be like monitoring them twenty-four seven anymore. That'll be my job. Um, I'm a s- I know the word assume is not a good word here, but, um, my assumption is that they're gonna be hands off with these, since they did not purchase them for us. Um, but all they would need to do is put them on the network here, which is a very simple thing to do. I physically can do it, but I don't have the admin credentials to do it. Um, so it's not a hard thing at all. Um, and then, we'd be working directly with Dell anyway for any problems that come up, so.
Well, that's only, the only thing, I like the local component of having, if there's any quote unquote problems that come up, because sometimes working with Dell, just in my experience, you're calling typically overseas. When you buy them, you speak to someone in the continental US.
Right.
When you need service, it's outside of the continental US, and sometimes it can be very, very, very frustrating. Versus having that, uh, third party or whomever that we'd be buying these from, having to, uh, be responsible for all that information. Same thing with, you know, unboxing and crating and, you know, loading and pre-installing everything. They might have an added charge for doing that now, unless you're gonna take that on, um, versus if you were buying it from them, so. Sometimes when I, uh, cause I've gone that road too, I used to, you know, do that, and it ended up costing me more money in the long run, so just to be cautious. And then my last thing, if, 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 if we get a note, can we get sometime, and maybe we have this, um, some type of inventory of all these computers that we have? I mean, twenty, I mean, I'm just doing the math on how many, like, full-time employees, twenty-three computers seems like an awful lot.
And all, one per employee?
Yeah, and. This is, this is coming under the, the show your work kind of heading. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's great that you're on this and you, and that you're doing this, but.
I have a list, I can show you.
Yeah, well, I think that's, that's what you need to come to the table ready with, I think, is, like, here's the list of computers. These, you know, and who's getting it, and this, these eight are this year, and this eight is the next year. Um, you know, cause we're, this, this seems to be going down the road of like having an in-house IT person in. And I'm not sure that that's a wise direction, um, for the town, because, you know, you're, you're a young talented guy, and you know, you're still in school, and that, sometimes you're gonna get done school and then go get some job that pays way more than we're paying you, you know, and then, and then what? Right, so, um, I think that's, I think that's a discussion we need to have about, you know, what is the, what is the longer-term support model for, um, for all this?
Uh, just the computer, just from, just from, I'm, I'm, maybe the Capitol, um, folks have it, but just from a, you know, I, I wouldn't wanna call it an depreciation schedule, cause that's not really what it is, but, you know, the, the year of the computer, the make and use, when we bought it, et cetera. Just basic information, what it's typically used for in the town, just cause I, I can assure you, there's a lot of people, if you go to a town meeting, I'm like, what do we have twenty-three computers for? Um, just, that seems like an awful lot, even for me, and I've been around for many years.
So, so you're, you're thinking Data Defined's gonna strong-arm the town, if we don't buy the computers from them, then they're not gonna provide the service.
I'm thinking they're gonna strong-arm, just for, not, no, I wouldn't necessarily say that, but sometimes, it's just like any other subcontractor. If you don't buy their materials, there's an upcharge typically.
But they're buying Dell computers.
You're buying, you're buying Ico shingles.
We're just, we're, we're paying the middleman, and you're okay with that?
But what I'm saying is, I don't know if you're, they're marketing them up, is what I'm saying, is that money might be there for the service that you're providing. It's like a hundred and twenty, it's not, it's not a hundred, it's like a hundred and twenty bucks or something, the differential there.
Right.
And it might cost you more than that to do everything.
The other thing I'm, I'm concerned about is, you know, any of the driver packages, so if you end up with a mismatch of drivers by getting, let's say, an upgraded computer and you're running your software, then, you know, who's installing that driver? Who's getting that driver off the internet? Is it B K, B K, or is it, uh, or is it us? Right, who's responsible for that interface between the software and the hardware? I want one that, honestly, I want one guy to be responsible for all of that, so, again, pick up the phone, hey, the computer doesn't work. I don't, I don't wanna call two different, cause one guy's gonna point to one guy, and the other guy's gonna point to the other guy, say, no, it's a software problem, oh, it's a hardware problem.
Right.
Now, you're stuck in the middle, there's a, there's a, a three-way there, which isn't a good place to be. Um, so, um, yeah, I, 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 I walk, tread, tread lightly into this before you jump in on both, both feet.
Right.
Make sure we, you have that all worked out as to, and, and I agree, the long-term plan would be a, you know, one-stop shopping. I think is really what you want. I'd also add to that list, not only the computers, I think I've mentioned this to Devin at one point, that have a list of all the software that's on all the computers as well individually, like from a, from a standpoint, even if it's a licensed, you know, I got a trio running on four computers, okay, well, which four computers have the licenses to run that on, on there, right? Have that all, you know, just a simple matrix, it's not, they don't have to be too detailed, but just enough so you know, alright, this computer, you know, be it, it's got five licenses on it that we need, let's transfer those licenses to this computer. But if you, this guy's in charge of that, he's gonna do all that for you, otherwise, you're.
I mean, if, if it's the board's wish to stick with Data Defined, we can do that, I just wanted Devin to get some numbers on, if.
Yeah, I was just. Yeah, but numbers, numbers, eh, yeah, and there's, there's no fault of anything that's done here, but, you know.
But what's behind the numbers too?
Numbers in, in response to a plan, and we don't have a, it doesn't feel like we have a plan, or at least one that we've seen, we're talking, well, we're gonna replace the computers, but we don't, we don't, what's the plan for the ongoing?
Right, well, we have a plan that's in place more than we did at special town meeting.
Yeah, sure.
We're working on that plan, so, I mean, that's gonna take some time to do.
No, I think, I think, yeah, it, town meeting, we had a good plan, we were gonna have B K go and supply us with computers, X number based on cost, and nothing else was really gonna change, other than getting new equipment in. So this adds a new element, I think, to that original plan, that I'm not sure.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that we had a plan at that point, I would say that we had an estimate of what it was gonna cost to buy computers, but the plan for exactly where they would be bought, how they would be supported, all that stuff wasn't really part of it at that point.
So, I, I think one way to kinda get the answer to this question is to go back to Data Defined and say, if we purchase these computers, what is our cost gonna be for you to do all this work?
And think about what the ramifications are down the road.
And what's the difference between Data Defined and B E K? What, what is? Oh, they did, okay.
It's very confusing.
Yeah, it took me a few minutes to get.
So now I just say both, cause somebody's gotta know one of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we, we just have some homework to do.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, David.
Thank you, David. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. So the only other real project we have on Opera is the G, the, the mapping, and we're gonna talk about that in one of the, um,
Okay, yeah.
Authorizations of, uh, special alternative, and I can explain how that works. Um, so the union church roof, that's done, that's com- that's complete, that went well.
Looks nice.
Yeah, um, so what you probably ought to know is the sills around that whole building are gone. I mean, it's out there absolutely shot, you can stick your fist right through them, so.
I'll get a picture.
At some, right, at some point, we're, we're gonna have to have some sort of discussion on what the town wants to do.
Yeah, like, how, I mean.
I mean, what, what's the?
How much money are we gonna keep pouring into that building?
Exactly, it's got a brand-new roof and.
We should probably go take a look at all the comms too.
Yeah, I didn't go inside, Calvin was the one that pointed out the sills to me, and I went over there and looked at it, and I'm like, wow, we just, we just spent sixteen grand on a roof, and the sills look like this, so, uh, sills around the whole building would have to be replaced. I was just looking at it from the outside, so I don't know what the plan is for the building.
There is no plan for the building.
So we might wanna.
That's, I think, what the larger discussion needs to be, like, how, how long are we gonna?
Right.
Keep kicking this thing down the road and so forth.
Well, and it's ult- yeah, it's ultimately, well, I mean, we, we had, and when the previous town manager was here, before last budget season, we had, as a board, um, you know, Josh and Joe weren't here yet, but we had asked her, you know, to go ahead with the process of forming a, uh, union church committee, um, to basically start to answer some of the questions, like, you know, what do we, what do we even wanna do with this building? What are some, you know, proposals or whatever, to at least start the discussion. Um, but given how last budget season went, and then her resignation and whatever, I have had people reach out to me and ask about that committee, and I've kinda been holding them off, saying, well, you know, let, you know, let's wait till we get a new town manager hired, and give him a chance to get his feet wet, you know, and, and, you know, we're prioritizing kind of mission-critical stuff right now. Uh, so, you know, I told them it probably, probably be after, you know, after budget season before we would, you know, turn any serious attention to other things that weren't mission-critical, but.
Isn't that something, don't we have a historic?
Yeah.
Isn't that something that?
They, so the way.
Commission.
They, so by, and this was actually, i- if you go back, there, uh, some, I think, I think it was Ruth found it, that, um, it was voted on at town meeting, that essentially the historic society is the, um, rent-free tenant of that building, basically, but it's, it's still owned by the town. They, they don't have any, um, responsibility for that building at all.
There isn't, there isn't an existing committee, though, that can look at this?
No, no, there isn't, no, to answer your question, yeah.
I think it was maybe even more broader than just the union, I think it was like a building, the town's building committee, right, it was, cause we have multiple buildings, one being the Eureka and that, that, you know, people really need to.
It could be, yeah, it could be.
That need a good assessment, that need a good assessment, you know what I mean, as far as what, what it's gonna take and what the ultimate goal is for these particular buildings.
From the sound like, s- sound of things, it sounds like that could be a little more critical now than you had thought previously. Is it something that's worth a conversation sooner?
Well, no, I don't think it's anything more than we thought previously, because I, as far as I've been on this board, we've been dealing with something with that building almost on an annual basis. There's always something that's gonna come up in a, I don't know, what is it, two hundred years old or something? Yeah, I mean, you go in there tomorrow and spend another thirty thousand dollars, and next week, you're probably gonna find something else. I mean, that's just, that's just the nature of the game with those buildings.
Yeah, it, it could be that, um, it could be a question that we could, uh, poke at a little bit, you know, if we, if we do a survey, like we talked about doing, uh, in, as part of the November election. You know, you could put a multiple choice on there or something, you know, what would you, what would you like to see? What do you think should be the town's course of action with that building, and then it have various options that we could come up with? See what people are thinking, and thinking of a, you know, like, one of the options might be, should the town continue to invest, um, you know, taxpayer funds to keep the building, you know, whatever. Or should it, should it go even further and say, not just keep it from falling down, but like, go to the next level and like, put utilities in it and, you know, and.
Use it, yeah.
Use it, but then, then, I, that's one of the questions that is, I, I was talking with someone the other day, I said, even if that building were in pristine condition right now, like, we could ma- wave a magic wand, what could you do with it?
Right.
There's, there's no parking or anything like that, you know, um, it's like something you can look at and feel good about for some people, you know, it's, it doesn't really have a use anymore. And, and, I mean, the, the other option is, is that, if you wanna get way out there, somebody should buy the piece of land next to the fire station, uh, and move it and put it over there. Hey, you're talking some.
That's some big money.
Big beaucoup bucks of that, but, you get, might be a number, so it's.
Yeah.
They have to gauge what the town wants to do, right? I mean, it's ultimately, it's their money, do they wanna keep putting into that building or not?
Yeah, and if you, let's say you put two hundred thousand dollars into that building, there's no sprinkler, there's nothing, I mean, fire, not this chief, but we've had previous chiefs tell us, nobody's going in that building if this catches on fire because of the.
I'm all for saving the historic buildings, you know, I'd love to go through them, walk through it.
Beautiful.
But, but if, if there's no use for it, there's no purpose other than for us to look at it from the outside? At, at some point, the.
There's a lot of town history in there, you'd have to, to see it, you got to really understand it, you'd have to go in there to appreciate it, cause there is a lot of stuff in there. It's, it's pretty much.
Society's got a bunch of stuff in there, you know, so it, it could, I mean, it, it is kind of, they have some events, you know, pre, pre-pandemic, they were having some events. Um, and, and people, they were generally pretty well-received, people liked them, they weren't all there, sometimes they were tours around town.
Yeah, yeah.
But they were doing some good stuff, um, but yeah, I mean, that is a question, like, okay, what, what would the town want to do with it, and could we even do what the town wants? Like, if they say, oh, we think we should, you know, have that be a place we could rent out for weddings? Well, I don't, you could probably get the building there, but where, where are people gonna park? Right, so, it might be.
For the sprinkler system.
Yeah, what people, what, what the town might actually want may not be possible without something really drastic.
Yeah, so it is cool, but there's, there's no, other than electric, there's no utilities, really, there's nothing.
No water, no heat.
Yeah, there's no electricity there?
Just barely.
Well, there is though, I mean, they got, they got alarm.
There is, but, just barely.
What did you do in town meetings where in there in April, is there a big wood stove in there or something? Okay, yeah.
Outdoors.
The four floors inside.
There was.
Yeah, right, right in the floor, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, the in-house.
I remember going there for town meetings.
I wouldn't use it.
Town meeting in there?
Yeah, town meeting there.
That, up until the, this building is only like mid-eighties, right?
Yeah, yeah, before we were able to have them at school, be- before we had the gymnasium at school, we didn't have a building big enough.
Well, I remember the old school, they did them in the gym at the old school, when I first moved here.
At the gym, but before that, we didn't have the gym.
Oh, really? The gym on the old school?
I didn't, yeah. Yeah, I was in eighth grade when we got the gym.
Were you guys still cooking horse and buggy over there?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Tying up the horse outside, you didn't even park it, I think you're doing.
Even what, even what parking you have there, the sight distance pulling out of there is pretty.
Not good, yeah, it's not good.
That's another issue, you know, so, there's a lot of things to, to discuss, to.
Really, I think, I think something, if, if you really wanted to use that building.
Rumble strips on one thirty-six?
It's, uh.
Yes.
Or reroute one thirty-six.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah. It's a tiny law.
Right?
You can't expand it.
But anyway, it's done.
Yeah, yeah, so, but there's, what, there's.
Dry.
A lot more to do on that, and, um, we just gotta figure out how to start that process, cause the people that are, you know, and I commend them for their enthusiasm, whatever, but the people that have stepped forward in the past haven't, haven't really had the skill set for that type of thing, you know? Um, so, we need, we need kind of those people and their enthusiasm and their passion with some people that have like, not, not, and I'm not talking just the trade skills, I mean, you know, uh, searching grants for those types of things and.
Yeah, that's true.
All, all that type of stuff.
Is there, is there, do we need to hire an engineer to say, this is what needs to be done to make it?
There's actually some work that's been done on that, yeah.
So that, because I don't wanna go and have this questionnaire and, and not have all of the information.
Well, we, the information is, is, I, I, I guess I would challenge that a little bit, is, we're not at, it's not a definitive vote thing, it's kinda like, what are people, what are they interested in, just to give us a sense of direction.
So, so I, I, for, for me, how could I tell you what I wanna use it for, if, if what I wanna use it for is gonna be X number of dollars versus this other thing that would be great to use it for, which is Y number, and more feasible? I, that's, that's kind of what I'm looking at, you know, if you, if you want my opinion, I, I need all the information, I don't have it. Um, and so that's something that I think would be worth sharing at some point, in some manner.
Not a matter of sharing it or not, it's whether we have it or not.
Well, there, there is an account for it.
Yeah, but that doesn't tell us how much anything's gonna cost.
No, 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 but there's a, there's a money account.
Yeah, there, there's a, there's a, um, uh, assigned fund, right?
I would think if, if the M B S start this old home stay, home days thing, it could, could trigger interest and maybe have an open house there, uh, and show what we have for artifacts in there.
Well, we're not gonna solve that tonight, but. Well, we're not gonna solve that tonight, but I mean, that, this is like the type of broader discussion we need to have, whether it's a survey or public, you know, like kinda, you know.
We used to, and we haven't done it for a while, maybe it's about time we do it again, but we, there was a time where the board would go to the properties of the town and examine them.
That's an excellent idea.
So maybe that in the public works building and and so forth, that, so everybody has a clue of what's going on, you know?
Would you guys, um, and maybe we wouldn't get them, when do you think we should do, would we try to do that, like maybe?
Before the snow flies. Or way to the spring, but. But, uh, yeah, I think that would be crucial, especially if we're gonna try to outline something for the public to, um.
Yeah, and like I said, it may not be good timing for this November to ask anything on a survey.
Yeah, no, probably not, but, but I think we need to, I think, you know, to answer some of your questions, you'd have to see. It's, it's hard to, I mean, we could, we could tell you everything about it, but it's until you actually visit the property and actually see it, it's, it's kinda hard to explain.
Is it open, I mean, that, that was, I was talking to my wife about it, you know, is it open, can, can you?
There's some days the historical society.
Yeah, it's not open like all the time, you know, um, but we should probably have someone from the historic society.
Calvin will give you a tour, he seems to be the gatekeeper of the town.
Why don't we, why don't we, um, maybe see it? Should we try to do that, like, um, like, before regular meetings some night, like come in at?
Yeah, I think the last time, we, we went in at like five thirty, we did, I think we just did the two buildings, it was just that one in the old Methodist church that we had.
Right.
Um, but it's, we don't have any more thing, so we did get rid of one of these situations, but it just, even the public works, I think it's good for the board that's never been to a building like that and seen the facility and so forth, just so they get familiarized if a citizen ever asks you, et cetera.
And we don't have to do it all in one meeting, we could, like, over two, three meetings, we could say, hey, this week we're gonna go see, you know, public works before the meeting or whatever.
Probably be a good idea in November, before he starts plowing to see what we have for equipment. And see what, what we have for a level of expertise inside the garage, you know, and all the.
Yeah, I was looking at it more just from a. Facilities, you know, this is what we're utilizing these buildings for and if, you know, for, like, maybe the chief, you know, maybe you've never been to the fire station, I've been through it a little too many times, but um, you know, just to get yourself familiar, because there is gonna be a time where a citizen's gonna come up to you and say, hey, what's going on at that public works? Why do I drive by at night and there's a light up in the second floor, what's going on up there? And you're gonna say, well, we actually utilize that as a bunkhouse when they're driving trucks and plowing your road sometimes, so that's why there's a light on in there, but, so you might not know that. Um, so things like that, just so you get familiar with it.
Or if, uh, like, there were, like, there were a couple of years there where, and he might come at it again this year. Calvin's looked for this big shower curtain type thing in the garage for sp- you know, for spray in the trucks, so it gives them a chance to show you well, like, wa- make their case a little bit, like, why they might think they.
That's why, I think it's a good idea to, you know, go see, see how it looks.
Yeah, we could, we could probably do like two build, I mean, wh- what do we got? We got three buildings now?
Oh, we got.
Old Town Hall.
Old Town Hall.
Hall, Eureka, Public Works, Fire Station, this one. And there's other. There's other property that doesn't have a building, like for instance, land on Swamp Road.
Yeah, that's where I was gonna say, you put that. You could put that on Swamp Road, six acres, you could have a big enough parking, you could accommodate a big enough septic system for people, if you did utilize it in a public capacity. Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, where you can't do that on that property, so you call up the guy in gray and you say, put that building over there.
It's not the worst idea.
No, it isn't the worst.
Rich, it's a good use of that property.
I mean, that, if the town wants to go that direction, they wanna preserve something that's costing them, they keep just putting money towards something which at this point, we're all Tom Hanks in the frickin' money bit with that building, you don't know what's gonna bite us in the ass next week. So that, that's why, I mean, if you're really gonna do it right, you gotta, like you said, you gotta move the building and you gotta have a big enough space where you can have parking and you can have a big enough septic system to accommodate fifty people or whatever the hell it is. That's all, and we do have that nice six acres that nobody's ever gonna utilize.
Is that all it is, is just six acres?
Maybe more, I'm not sure, for some reason I got six in my head, maybe it's eight or ten, I'm not sure.
There's that, uh, that's gonna trigger, like, trigger another agenda item that we'll talk about later.
Sure.
Yeah, alright.
So I've asked, I've, I've kind of, speaking of Calvin, we don't really have like a buildings and grounds guy, so I've kinda looked at Calvin and said, how do you feel about that, you know, being kinda like the keeper of? I mean, I, I was that guy in my last municipal, I had both public works and buildings and grounds, and it's just a, it's just a person, cause every, cause Calvin will ask, he's like, or I'll ask, like, well, who's taking care of this? Who's in charge of this? And he's like, I don't know.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I don't know, and it's like, well, we need somebody.
Yeah, cause we have like, like, uh, Runaround Pond is a good example of, uh.
And he's mowing out here and we got this building, so they really should.
Definitely the groundskeepers, there's no question there. The building element does add a different layer to it, but I, I think it's, you could definitely blanket that all.
Town manager, that's your, that's your deal, buddy.
I'm sure you don't want it, so I'm sure you could delegate it over to somebody.
Well, I, you know, I'd work with it, with Calvin, you know, I've got.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I've got some good building construction background, but, I mean, somebody needs in town that works for the town, needs to kinda be a keeper of.
I think Calvin's done it over the years by default, he likes it.
Yeah, exactly. Good.
We need to make it official, so.
So boards and committees, so we, uh, we put that out on the lab news blast, we haven't gotten any responses. We do have one more vacancy on the planning board, that's a voting member that we've also.
Oh, is that a new one?
Yeah.
Who's that?
Good question, I am not familiar with the name, uh, John Talbot told me, but I can't remember. No, 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 that's a good question, I apologize for that, I should know the name, but it, I, it escapes me now, Jessica knows too.
Okay.
But, that's out there, and it was an alternate, he's hoping an alternate would step up, but nothing yet, so that's.
So the alternates aren't interested in stepping up? Cause that's kinda why they're there.
Right.
There's no point in being an alternate if you're not waiting for the seat.
Yeah, one, one has expressed interest but hasn't stepped up yet, so, we, they were hoping by advertising it, they would kinda push it. So we'll see how that, uh.
Yeah, cause if, that, if we have alternates, that, it's not, we, people shouldn't be looking at the alternate seats as like the you know, part-time.
Part-time planning board.
You know, it's kinda like, you're there part-time and until a, uh, voting seat opens up, but I guess maybe we need to be clear that the expectation is, is that if we're appointing you to an alternate seat and a seat opens, a voting seat, a regular seat opens, then you're, you're gonna get appointed to it, so.
I always thought that was implied.
Right, well, well, me too, but I guess we have to actually state it.
Yes, I thought it was implied.
Maybe they just need a reminder.
Yeah.
But nothing yet, no responses yet for the C I P, you know, the budget committee.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna plant a bug in ears here, um, so budget, that means budget committee would meet if it, if we don't get it. Well, actually, if nobody expresses interest, um, they would meet with seven, which in my opinion is plenty, and, um, I think we should consider, um, putting an article on the warrant at our next town meeting that would reduce the budget committee size from nine to seven. And because, you know, half the time, the people that end up on that committee didn't actually take out papers and run, they was a, they get written in by like twelve people. You know, so, um, anyway, just something to put a bug in your ear and, and, you know, we don't, we're we're not gonna discuss it tonight necessarily, but just think about what you think about that.
I, I've got somebody who's considering it also, uh, a name, so.
Expressing interest to get appointed to the budget, okay.
Budget or a planning board.
Well, planning board is a more pressing need and a more important position for sure, because it's like a year-round thing, whereas budget committee is just kind of a and, and that's an act, the planning board is a quasi, as you know, I don't have to tell you, quasi judicial thing, whereas budget committee is, is just, it's just an advisory, um, committee, so.
My wife offered, but I told her probably not a good idea, so.
You know, I've been, I've been saying. Yeah, for planning board, that wouldn't be an issue. Maybe in your house, in your family dynamics, it would be an issue, but I don't think, uh.
Yeah, you should meet the criteria.
Because they, we have no authority over the planning board at all, we appoint the people and you could recuse yourself from that. But, yeah, anyway, so don't let that hold her back.
Next thing you have, something in your packet, this, uh, critical infrastructure security assessment concerning Alex. Jessica got this in her email and, uh, she got a hold of this Thomas Swenson thing, who's gonna visit the town and kinda look at our buildings here and the school to kinda see, uh, how we sit infrastructure-wise as far as, uh, safety and our vulnerabilities, it's free and he'll give us a report on where we stand. And they're looking, you, you know, they were only gonna do ten towns this round and we got, we were actually town number ten that they called up. And they're hoping to open it up more after this election in hopes of more towns getting assessed before the presidential election, so.
Is this a voluntary thing?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. Yeah, she just.
We wanna do this.
Well, because she just felt that, you know, she does elections and she wanna know if she was, it's free, it ain't, it, it, it isn't. I mean, she's coming, he's coming, then.
I don't have a problem with doing it, uh, the only problem is, is if a deficiency is noted and it's a significant deficiency, we would have to take action. And that's not necessarily a bad thing, but that's just.
Right.
I don't think it's binding, is it?
Not necessarily binding, but if somebody tells you like, hey, by the way, I mean, what, what are you gonna say? And then when something does happen, you're gonna say, well, they knew about it, they just didn't wanna act on it, now we, we wouldn't have a choice, we wouldn't be able to say, oh, we never knew about that.
Right.
So this would, this would kind of expose us to, you know, what in theory could possibly be wrong with our security.
Right.
You know what I mean? And that could cause, that could trigger action, is all I'm saying, cause once you know, you know.
They would need, the, the R S U needs to be involved in whether this happens or not.
I believe they are.
Yeah.
Okay. Cause it's their building, okay.
Right, absolutely.
De-escalation training?
De-escalation training, I don't have a good feeling about this.
Yeah, I don't think it's anything, I wouldn't really worry too, too much about it, it's just, like, for instance, like this building right here. There's no like protection here, we could end up like Chelsea and have somebody drive right through the brick. That just happened.
They wanna get some balls out here, or? I can get some balls out here and.
Get some on?
Balls, concrete balls.
Target balls?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, that's, and that's what that sort of says, you know, because they didn't have any, they didn't have any in front of their town office either, and somebody just plowed right in through it. Now they got a big hole in their town office, so, it's things like that.
That would, yeah, I know, somebody puts it and drives. Alright, well.
No offense, but it's always somebody over the age of sixty-five, every time it's ever happened to me.
Alright, okay.
She wanted to do it, I, I, I didn't think it was that big of a deal.
I just, I am philosophically, i- if, if, if I don't have to let the federal government in somewhere, I'm not letting them in.
Well, yeah, so. I was thinking the same thing.
This is, this is a government bureaucrat looking for a way to justify their paycheck.
Yeah, well.
But that's fine, hey, it makes Jessica feel safer and better than that's.
Well, she does the elections and.
Yep. Yep.
I do think election security is a big thing these days, so I mean, I don't think it, eh, this is repercussions, I don't think it'll hurt anything, but I mean, there are things that may be exposed that we, like I said, we might have to almost be forced to take action, cause you just can't look at, to blind away.
That's the thing, once, once it's on the.
Once it's identified.
Something happens, well, so-and-so was through and filed this report and you never did anything.
Because if something then really happens, then we're pretty locked.
But it's gonna be within our means to do something, I mean, I, right?
That's a judgment call.
Right, right, but.
He's the attorney, asking, they get people on that stuff all the time.
So are these guys actually gonna hop on the network and try to break in?
No, 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 I don't have anything, no, I don't believe so, we'll know more from Tom when he does it.
Okay.
She's, Jessica's been in, has been talking to him.
Okay.
She's comfortable with what he's saying, so, I'm gonna trust my staff.
Hey, was there a big line?
Huh?
Was there a big line to get this service throughout, do we have to like go into a lottery to get it, or are we like one of the few that volunteered for it?
No, she just said, I really.
Cause that'll tell you everything you need to know.
She just really thought she wanted to do it.
Nah, it's cool.
Just don't let them near my network.
I R S all of your taxes for, hey, could you mind looking at these for me?
Alright. The only other thing, I just wanted to remind the public that we're having an input on our capital project using offer funds at our next, uh, select. Let them know, we'll put that out on our website tomorrow and.
And were we, we were gonna have, were we gonna have a list of, of, uh,
Capital improvement.
Projects that were at least on the table from the department heads for.
I got Calvin's today.
To react to, I think, you brought that up, right?
I got, and we're having a meeting, uh, chief and Calvin and I on Monday, that's when they're due to me.
Yeah, so I think.
So you'll have them.
Okay, good, so we'll have it at that, yes, I mean, here is, you know, and really informal, not like.
Right.
Here are things that, you know, department heads have brought up, you know, yada, 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 just, um, and then people could say, yeah, I really like that third idea you mentioned, or, or I hate that fifth one you mentioned, and, but I've got this other idea that wasn't on the list that I think we should do, you know, so we, that'll help, that'll help frame up the, give people something to react to, I think that's a good call. Okay?
And this will be prior to C I P, did we get anybody a third person for C I P yet? Did you see any paperwork come through?
No, no, no one on.
So it's, right now, it's, it's Paul and.
Paul and I, yeah.
No one's, no one stepped up, so.
We may have to, uh, more, more actively recruit the, that one and planning board.
Yep, yeah, those, need to get one more person on C I P.
I thought Brian Pike was on that.
He was, or he, yes, he was, uh.
And then wasn't there a woman?
Yeah, Michelle, uh, uh, we, we've been in touch with Michelle when I wasn't sure if, uh, Michelle Rula was, uh, was gonna be, uh, joining us again, I think she was still thinking about it, so.
But wasn't she, I think, wasn't, so, everybody was appointed for like three years, right?
Right, and it ended up, it was just for the most part, it was Michelle, Paul and myself, um, and, and Brian was in a number of meetings. Last year, he was at a couple of meetings, but I don't know if Paul's had any success coming and holding him. And Curtis.
Says, actually, alright, well, I say, yeah, we might, um, we might need to do some recruiting.
Yeah.
Okay.
But he been, he was pretty busy, so.
Okay.
Alright, that's it for the managers' report.
Alright, so next, uh, the agenda is, uh, looking for authorization to sign the contract with spatial alternatives, and this is the, um, G I S mapping.
Right, so last meeting, there was some confusion on, y'all thought it was like sixteen thousand and it was only twelve five cause you thought there was this sort of main, uh, two-year maintenance thing or, or there, or warranty or something.
Well, the subscription to the service for the two.
Well, the, the two-year thing that was, was part of agility, that, that's all under warranty. Up there for two years, this Mitch added two thousand for, or he didn't add two thou- well, he added, he he made it sixteen thousand for two years of updates that they'll do to the maps moving forward. They're not going to be free, they're gonna update the maps. Right, they're gonna, and they can't give you an exact price because they don't know how much the updates are gonna be, they don't.
Between thousand and two thousand bucks.
It could be one thousand, it could be two thousand, but the contract is for twelve thousand five hundred, alright.
And that includes the website and everything?
Yep, everything, that's right on, you, there's a third page.
That's one, one year with one update or?
Two.
What about the annual, what about the annual fee for it, which is five hundred bucks? Will we get the two hundred, will we get two years of, town annual software cost?
No, two years.
T S R I is five hundred bucks.
Yep.
So, are we just going with just the initial one, we're not getting, we're not gonna put in that two years of the contract cost there like we discussed? So it'd be a thousand bucks, basically.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not following you on that, but, but yes, no.
So is it just that it's less than what we thought?
Well, it's twelve thousand five hundred, but Mitch made it six, six thousand because he, but, cause he wanted two years of updates to be included.
So are the two, so with.
He funded with opera funds, the sixteen.
So, for the twelve thousand, what do we get, I guess is my question.
You get the tax maps all updated.
So we get the program, the web, you get the tax maps, and we get two years of updates with that?
No, for the twelve thousand five hundred, no.
Okay, alright.
No, so.
That's the, that's a two-year fee for all of that basic stuff access for twelve thousand dollars, is that what we're saying?
No. No.
No, that's the setup.
That's just the setup, that's the initial setup.
Right, that's for them to digitize all the tax maps.
And then we'll have thirty-five hundred dollars left over for upgrades over the next two years.
So depending on how many upgrades there are, how many, how the tax maps change, if they change, if there's more subdivisions. It just depends on what, how much the update is, is gonna be, uh, will determine what that costs is rather.
But.
Uh, if there's not many updates, it won't be as much. If there's a lot of updates, it'll be more.
And I assume the updates are based on whatever goes on in town, right?
Right. Whatever changes to the tax maps happen.
So do we just need to pick a schedule of, we're just gonna update it once a year? I mean, or do you do it once every month? Or do you do it once every six months, or do you do it? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think you do it once a year.
Once a year.
Yeah, that's what.
Yeah, so, yeah, updates include uploading parcel updates on a yearly basis.
Right.
Checking quarterly and when notified by town of any issues related to the site, annual report of usage, revisions that are needed to keep up with new releases. It also includes quarterly update of the mailing address information. So some stuff is quarterly.
So, so it's twelve-five to get it set up, then there's the five hundred dollars annual cost and then the seven fifty. No, it's just the five hundred software cost.
I think it's both of them. That's why I think Mitch came up with the twenty-five hundred for two years, which would be twelve fifty a pop, right? Twenty-five hundred bucks.
Right. Oh, you're right, but the seven fifty is not, doesn't apply to the first year. Cause we're not doing any updates. I mean, that's, it's, otherwise, otherwise, otherwise twelve, otherwise the twelve-five doesn't work. Otherwise it would be thirteen two fifty. So I'm just trying to figure out, make sure that I understand where the money is going.
So the next year, the seven fifty and five hundred, twelve fifty.
Twelve high, twelve fifty, right, yeah.
That's how I.
So that's where the number came from then.
What, did you add up all the numbers that are listed here?
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's, so it's eighty-five, ninety-five, twelve through task four. And then you add the tw- the five hundred for the annual software costs.
And the seven fifty.
And the seven fifty.
But the seven fifty is not due with signing the contract, so my impression is.
Right.
That you, you start paying that in year two.
Right, that annual maintenance, but that's what was, we kinda outlined that we were gonna have two years of, that's why I thought that twelve fifty.
Yeah.
Would be for an additional two years, so twenty-five hundred bucks for additional two years.
Yeah, well, I just wanted, when I was looking at it before the meeting, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep, and that could still happen, like, for the, for the, but it's just, it's gonna be some, some accounting and keeping track of that in terms of. You know, the, okay, so we, we've had sixteen thousand approved, um. On the article for this. This contract's gonna be for, you know, twelve-five and then the other, um. There's gonna be another, what, three thou- or thirty-five hundred? Thirty-five hundred for over the next two years.
Twenty-five hundred per year.
So like when it comes to the budget year and there's a line, it, it's gonna have a line in there for, or some, or some where. The expense for this is gonna be, come out of ARPA funds and then next year, the same thing, and then next year, it's funded out of the regular budget, right?
Right.
So.
And then you're also gonna have to probably possibly print some maps the second year, which will add some more dollars into it. You're gonna get a set of prints, products delivered, you know, you get.
That's optional, right?
Right, but I'm, but I'm, yeah, but I was just gonna ask, what, what do we use the printed maps for? I'm thinking there's a good use for them, having them, so you don't.
So, so you have the, I think it's so you have them. Cause you don't need them. If you have them online, you don't.
Print it yourself.
You lose the internet, what's that?
You know, like, but print the section you need. I mean, nobody needs the whole town.
Well, there, there might be one set you need printed for here at the office, like code enforcement.
That's right.
Or planning board reference copy or something like that. I don't know, but maybe not, maybe digital's fine for that too, but.
Maybe, but even on eleven by seventeen with every lot in this town, that's good luck deciphering that.
Well, it says, they, they offer the twenty-four by thirty-six too.
Right.
Alright, well, we're in the weeds.
The only other question, which I don't think should hold this up, uh, would be, when does the one year start? Like, do we get?
As soon as we sign this and get that to them.
So it's not on launch?
They're.
So it's, it's, yeah, it's not on launch?
No, they're waiting for that to get started.
So we lose however long between when we sign it and when they create the maps?
Well, it's gonna take them a while to.
That's what I mean. I would think that the annual would start on launch.
Oh, you mean as far as the updates?
Not at the time of.
Oh, yeah, the, the updates won't start until after they get completed, right.
Completed.
Absolutely.
Get it built first.
Cause hell, it could take four, five months.
Yeah, it could take, right.
So somebody's, I would assume George is going to provide them with all this stuff.
Yeah, George is leading this, this whole thing. He's work, he's working.
Lot of stuff here that they're gonna need.
Yeah, we, we had a meeting this morning.
A lot of it's on paper. A lot of it's on paper, it's not electronic.
That's their problem, they quarter it.
It's gonna be fun.
That's the project, that's why we brought it.
I would say, that's quite a project.
Um, although the first line here says, this master services agreement is entered into and effective on July twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two.
That's how long it's been.
Yeah. I know, but if, but you just said the contract's effective when we sign it, shouldn't that be today's date?
Well, she's gonna get started as soon as we sign this thing. She ain't doing anything until this gets signed. None of the, none of the other stuff that she does is gonna.
When you executed it, date it will be when it will start its effectiveness?
Exactly.
Cause she signed it on August fifth.
Right, she's been waiting for us to get this thing signed, so.
Alright.
None of the annual stuff will happen until the, they're done with, with what they.
I'm gonna move, we approve the uh, spatial alternatives, uh, master services agreement contract as presented.
I'll second it.
Todd seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor? Alright, let's get some maps.
Yeah.
Actually, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna move, I'm gonna amend, not amend my motion, rather. After we've approved the contract, I wanna move that we authorize the town manager to sign the contract.
Yeah.
Is that a second, Rich? Any discussion on that? All in favor? Okay, there you go, sir.
Thank you.
Cook it.
Alright. Consent agenda, um, I didn't, what is certificate of recommitment? What is that?
So Janet had these and she, where I'm, that been sworn in as the uh, tax collector, there's all these um. Taxes that have not been um, paid. So you basically just have to sign it to make me the tax collector on those dating back years. You can look through that. But that was the explanation that.
The outstanding bills that erode?
Right.
I need, just need your name on them.
Right, oh.
Oh, the recommitted to you instead of her. Okay, yeah, we did this.
Right.
Okay. Alright, um, is there anything anybody wanted pulled out of the consent agenda? Alright, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Okay, I move, Rich seconds, um, all uh, all in favor? Okay, that's good. So upcoming meetings, um, select board October eleventh and October twenty-fifth, six-thirty here at the town hall. And remember, we're interested in hearing at our meeting on, from the eleventh, what um, people's thoughts are on things we might do with um. The remaining um, ARPA funds, um, over the next couple of years, so hopefully people will show up and provide some input there. Um, and then planning board is meeting October twelfth at the fire station and there's, there's a public hearing element to that too, right? They, they've got some ordinance, proposed ordinance changes are gonna be discussing.
Yeah, with the housing, the affordable housing.
Affordable housing is the main thing on that, yeah, okay. Alright.
Does anybody wanna entertain coming in at six on the next board and going just to the town, the old town hall? Only, and I only say that simply because. I don't know how lit that place is, if we're not in daylight.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Um, once the clocks go back, we'll never make it before we get out of work.
Six o'clock early.
Yeah.
It only takes, it'll take us ten minutes. That's what it took us. I mean, you'll be more enamored of the stuff in there than it'll take you to walk through the building.
Do we want someone from the historical society with us?
Welcome to join us.
That's gonna take more than ten minutes then, if we do that, that's what I'm saying, which is fine. I think that's good, actually.
Okay, well, we're planning a half hour. We got twenty-five minutes to get back here.
Alright, so the next meeting's October eleventh.
We're gonna run out of, we'll run out of daylight.
Yeah.
I was just up in, in Rumford for a funeral, their historic society.
Yeah.
Pictures of downtown Rumford.
You should wanna hit them all on a weekend or something.
Nineteen thirties.
I may not be here on the eleventh anyway, so.
Well, you've seen it.
I have seen it, yeah, and I've heard the speech.
Couple times. More than once.
So, yeah, I think if you guys wanna do that, that'd be, that'd be great.
Yeah. Just provide a little context for you.
I think it's great, I do. I was gonna ask that separately.
Any other uh, select board comments on any topics?
Uh, I was gonna, I was just gonna ask about going into executive session to follow up on what we talked about. The last meeting.
Yep, yep, we can do that. Anything else before we do that?
No, are we, are we meeting there at six?
Meeting there, or are you gonna drive us and?
I can drive. But I can't fit everybody.
Yeah, I'll, 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 uh.
I'll meet you over.
Yeah, I'll be up there.
I think you'll be at his house.
Think we can, hey, that works for me too.
Right on my way.
It's on the way. His house is definitely on the way.
I'll leave a watch. I'll leave a watch to the corner for you.
Yeah, a little turn out of the way, but it's definitely on the way.
Alright, then, uh, I'm gonna move that we go into an executive session, uh, pursuant, uh. Pursuant to personnel matter authorized by M R S A four oh five six A.
Second.
Rich seconds. All in favor? Okay, we're in executive session. Thank you, Devin.
Recorded though?
Yeah, uh, so we're back out of executive session, uh, no action taken by the board, um, this evening. Uh, so I'm going to entertain a motion that we adjourn the meeting tonight.
I'll second that.
Well, you make the motion.
I'll make the motion that we adjourned, sorry.
Todd seconds. All in favor? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.